We'd like to call to order Agenda of Belton City Council Work Session Public Hearing and Regular Meeting, February 12th, 2019. Call Work Session to Order. Items for review and discussion. City Manager?
Yes, thank you Mayor. The first item under discussion this evening is BEMEA, otherwise known as Belton Emergency Management Agency. And I do have some information that I'd like to go ahead and provide and share with the council this evening and the community. The city council and city staff have heard that there are some concerns regarding the allocation of funds from the half-cent public safety sales tax to emergency management. I wanted to provide some background and let the council know that for many years, the city and the Belton Emergency Communication Volunteers, sometimes referred to as BECV or BEMEA, Belton Emergency Management Agency, it's also slang for, which is just our emergency management department, partnered to provide emergency sirens, weather spotting, and some storm shelter services. As time progressed, the city of Belton grew, and emphasis changed on the local, state, and national level to homeland security and disaster recovery. From its outset, the partnership between the city and BECV was beneficial. The two organizations working together have purchased a variety of items needed for proper emergency management, with the BECV routinely purchasing the items and then donating those items to the city. After receiving the donations, the city ensures and uses these items for the benefit of the Belton citizens. During fiscal year 2018, the city reorganized the emergency management department and moved it under the supervision of the fire chief. While members of the BECV began as unpaid volunteers, they are now considered part-time city employees, both by the city and the IRS. Our first responders, both fire and police, work with our part-time emergency management employees when needs arise. As the director responsible for supervising the emergency management department, the fire chief is responsible for submitting the department's annual budget requests and applying for grant opportunities. Both staff and elected officials are committed to following the promises that were made to the citizens, which led up to and include the ballot language approving the half-cent public safety sales tax, as illustrated by the nearly $800,000 the council has allocated to the fire department. Mayor, I wanted to provide this background information to you and the council, because I know there's been some chatter in the community about the ballot language that included emergency management, and wanted to assure the community that emergency management is covered by the fire department and with the assistance of the police department, and those needs are being met. I know that recently, there was some concern over needed clothing, over needed lighting, and ensuring that those items are in place. In my conversations with Chief Larky, the clothing was purchased last year and continues to be looked at on an as-needed basis. With the need, some of you that have been in Belton a little longer may know that we had an old 60s, 70s truck that had a generator in the back and then like a light bar. Well, it's a 60s, 70s truck, and it's older equipment, and it's kind of gotten tired and gone away. So, talked to Chief Larky about what is the, when we looked at replacing that, we believe that more efficient and better use of that equipment would be available. Chief has found some handheld lights, as well as handheld generators, that will help in those situations, and those have actually been, are being procured and transitioned out to those needed departments, employees, and individuals that work in public safety and emergency management. I think probably one of the biggest things that we need to look at is, and consider, is that under Belton Emergency Management, that does fall under the department, and while many of the individuals that started off as the Belton Emergency Communications Volunteers, we still refer to them as volunteers, but as I stated in my statement, and I think it deserves another state, another comment, is that those individuals are considered and viewed as part-time employees. They are not only from the city's perspective, but more importantly, from the IRS. And so, they are paid through emergency management, and their needs are then shared with the fire chief, who then includes it in their budget, and we address those needs as we go along. And I am, I know that some of you received some communications, myself, Chief Larky, Chief Personer here, and Sheila with the budget. If you have any questions about those items, happy to address them.
Well, I'm gonna chime in, I'm just waiting for anybody else. Because I've been in touch with several, and we've had several discussions at City Hall about this whole situation. And you guys gotta know that, that this has been a big tradition in our city, that emergency management. And it's come down to, we've gotta make sure that we're still serving and doing everything right, so that we have the same group, one way or another. So, my first question is gonna be along the lines of the budget. The chief, has the budget been lowered, or, I mean, what's the, and I'll ask Sheila if it doesn't go from there.
I mean, I don't know if you consider it lowered, the budget is around the same as it was last year. The proposed budget that I requested this fiscal year 20 is around the same. My request is more than what was granted, obviously, like all budgets, that's what you're in the budget process. But my amended, my budget that was, is given to you guys in this book is around, close to what it was this fiscal year.
Sheila, you wanna show me, and show us that, what you're looking at there? And you've showed me this several times, by the way, thank you.
So, the, this $45,684, this is the amount of money that is the department estimate column, so that is what they are anticipated to actually spend this current fiscal year, and then next year's budget increases to $48,415.
Which is an increase of how much?
Let's just do the math.
Yeah, 2200 roughly.
And so, I think, so, but their, their adopted budget last year was $50,215. You can see that they didn't spend that the prior year.
Explain those last two years before that.
Well, in, this is the fiscal year 2017 actual budget, in the amount of $73,061. That was before the reorganization was done, and there was a separate emergency management director at that time. So, last year, in the middle of the year, the emergency management director in department was reorganized, and Chief Larky became over that department, and the budget, so the actual expenses last year were $47,989. Now, there is no emergency man, separate individual that is in the emergency management department this current year, and that is why it drops down again to $45,684. And then you can see that, that their, their approved budget actually was an increase of 2,731 over what we think that will actually be spent this year.
Is that a pause? Okay. I thought both chiefs were gonna run this together. Are you guys still doing it together?
For the purposes of everyday management, budgeting, budget control, things like that, Chief Larky is the-
All the fun stuff.
Yeah. Chief Larky is the department head for, for doing that. As far as the practical emergency management, that means what happens on the street, we would co-manage those. If it is more of a police matter, I would be in charge of that incident. If it's more of a fire or disaster recovery, Chief Larky would manage that with our support. So, it depends upon the nature of the disaster that's going on at the time.
Okay, so, financially, we used to have a grant. What's the status of the grant, and what are we gonna do with the grant, and how's that gonna help us financially?
The status of the grant, the grant that you're talking about is a State Emergency Management Association Grant, which is kind of a pass-through grant from FEMA, from the federal, it's federal dollars passed through the state, down to the local municipalities. We had that grant in 2017. That grant paid for a percentage of, at that time, the director's salary and benefits, and some of his car, and some, a few other things. That totaled about $20,000 roughly. And then we matched it, you know, we matched the state grant. We did not have the grant in 2018, because we did not have the emergency management director alone in that position. I was, we reorganized, and I was put in charge as the emergency management director, but the state-
Let me stop you there then. Because we didn't, we lost the grant of how much?
Roughly $20,000, approximately $20,000.
Okay, go on.
So, we did not get the grant in 2018, because when we reorganized, we placed me at the fire chief as the emergency management director, and the state did not recognize any of my salary for the emergency management director's position, so they did not give us the grant. They said that I had to have a percentage of my salary be allocated towards emergency management. And since we reorganized, and I did not get a raise to do the emergency management, they did not classify any of my salary as grant-capable. So, we did not get the grant in 2018.
Could we have had you just say, "This is for emergency management" on his salary, then not give him any more money?
Absolutely, absolutely, and that, that's-
We even tried that, and then-
Well, and, and one of the things that I do wanna tell the council, and that I've had a conversation with Chief Larky about, is that was the comment from the prior SEMA director, and we are actually under new direction now at state, and so, what I've asked Chief Larky to do, Sheila's pulled up the baseline requirements in order to be eligible for the EMPG, and those are all things that we do, and that the department will continue to do. And so, I've asked Chief Larky to look at, it's a calendar-year grant, we may be too late for that this year, he's looking at those dates now, and what we wanna be able to do is apply for those again, show that, what the cost allocation is, and the time that he spends from fire, and what he spends on emergency management, and be able to apply again. And that is, that is what we will, our goal, and that's what we'll try to do.
So, that's your direction?
This is not, this is not an unusual model in, in the state or in the country, having either your full-time fire chief or your full-time police chief, also due duty as the city emergency management director. In the city of Raymore, their director is the police chief. As we attend the state SEMA conference, which is the state emergency management conference, there are many cities our size, smaller, some larger, that have full-time department head, either located in the police department or the fire department, that act as the emergency management director for that jurisdiction. So, there are some that have standalone emergency management departments and directors, there are some that, that responsibility falls under one of the other emergency providers, either police or fire.
So, in your case, it'd be Lieutenant Dan, maybe? I see him all the time at the neighborhood.
It would not be unusual for the department head to designate someone within the department, just like you have a, a division commander for investigations, you would have one that would take on the responsibility of emergency management. Kansas City Police Department has an emergency management commander that's designated within their department. Kansas City Fire Department has emergency management within their department, and then there's a separate emergency management coordinator for the city of Kansas City, but it's a much larger operation, obviously.
There's, I think they have five employees just in the emergency management department, but each department had a liaison that would work with the emergency management department.
But we've had a lot of discussion about having somebody, and you're looking now to, how are we gonna, are we gonna find somebody to do this, or are we gonna do it in staff? Or are we gonna try and get somebody outside with the grant?
Well, all of the above. One of the things I've asked Chief Larky to look at is, you know, we're in a perfect opportunity right now to take a look at what a best practice is, and look and see what our neighboring communities are doing. I know, you know, Chief Person just talked about, and Chief Larky just talked about what some of the other entities are doing, and I, I know what I'm familiar with in my own private, previous life, and, and that's typically what you'll see is a individual that's a emergency management coordinator, that answers to a chief that, and is responsible for that, but at that time, when maybe they're not totally busy with emergency management, they have additional administrative-type duties. And so, those are the things that we're gonna look at. We have a, we kinda have a slate here that's open to be able to look at what that best practice is. And so, we, before we just arbitrarily come to you and say, "This is what we're gonna do," we wanna take a look at that and do a strategic approach to it, and plan it accordingly, and bring you back what we believe is the best plan of how to approach emergency management in the city. One of the things I shared with the mayor this week when we were talking about it, was, we said, "Well, do we think we're prepared for an emergency?" Absolutely, we're prepared for an emergency. And I saw it when it happened a year ago, May, when we had a tornado. The mayor and I met, we drove around the community, I saw both chiefs at, at the, at the prime of their game, and in their career, and, and in their performance of their functions. When I saw both Chief Larky and Chief Person communicating together, together on a constant basis, having the police department driving the area, assessing where exactly that damage had occurred, exactly what areas were impacted. Chief Larky was working with the meteorologist to determine and ascertain exactly through our weather spotters as well, where the areas were that were damaged. And then the fire department was going door-to-door to check those individuals of those homes that had been impacted. And it was one of those things where we drove down a road, there was a tree blocking the road, and I'll never forget this, Mary turned and looked at you and said, "Oh, my God, look, just look, look and take in this area. Look at your emergency crews that are walking door-to-door, that are assessing the areas." I mean, they were on, they, they were doing exactly everything that they're supposed to do. A very proud moment. Had they needed the assistance of our, our part-time individuals that are in emergency management, previously referred to as volunteers, they absolutely wouldn't have been called, they would've been placed in locations that are needed. You know, if we'd had a intersection that had gone out, lighting was out, we needed somebody to work as, control of that area. They, they've been called out the last couple of years, when we had our, you know, eight-inch and 10-inch rains, and we needed, instead of seeing public works or police blocking those intersections, we called those individuals out to be able to work those intersections and help us. And that's why those individuals, those part-time individuals are so important. And Mayor, your reference to them of keeping them, assisting the city is just invaluable. But our own police department, our fire workers and staff have just done a phenomenal job, and, and they do exactly what they're supposed to do, and what the manual says for an emergency situation.
Any other comments or questions?
The last, the last conversation I've had with the state SEMA office about the grant was that the deadline was somewhere around the end of January, but that was put on hold because of the government, federal government shutdown, so.
Don't get too anxious. They have another one right away.
I'm just telling you what they told me, so, that's where we're at with it, so.
So, we're gonna try to get it in there.
More news to come soon, so.
Any other buddy, anybody, anybody at all? Okay, I'm sorry I took up so much time. Over here, Councilman Leitner.
Well, it's been a while, but when Mayor Pinky Pank and I went to the emergency management, or whatever they was called back then, to ask them, would they consider taking over the next step, which is emergency management? And they agreed to do that. And then that lasted up until this last year, when we moved it to the fire department.
What was it called, civil defense back then?
Yeah, civil defense, I'm sorry. And before, before I went out there, as soon as they created the civil defense, wanted us to change it, I spent two days in schooling down at Mid-America Regional Council, under emergency management, from somebody from one of the Texas colleges, I can't remember which one. But it was two days telling what we should do in case this happens, and what we should do in case that happens. And we did, I did present that to the people that was in civil defense at that time, that, what they had to do. So, it, it's been a long process, but that's where, where it's got to. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, we're moving on. Let's get to budget overview. Looks like special revenue funds, are you gonna-
Yes, this evening, we're gonna talk about our special revenue funds, as well as our proprietary funds, and Sheila has some additional information to go over with the council this evening. Sheila?
Good evening. I'm gonna kind of try to do a, a brief overview, although my, my notes, my Cliff Notes are like two and a half pages long. So, we'll, we'll kind of go quickly, but if you guys have any questions, please stop me at any time. And Councilman McPherson also sent questions, and as we get to those funds, I will, will answer those questions, let, let you know what they are, and then answer them. So, I'd like to start actually with the proprietary funds.
Page?
Page 76 is the wastewater fund, and then there are, there are four proprietary funds in, in our budget. Proprietary funds are funds that are supposed to be ran like a business. They're supposed to be completely funded with the fees that, that are generated, fully funded that way. So, we have the wastewater fund. The most important thing to, to tell you guys about this fund is that, and there was a proposed 12.3% rate increase to wastewater rates this year. And then in the water fund, there's a 1% rate increase to water rates. I made a little table to kind of show you, we have two components to our water and wastewater rates. We have a debt service charge, and we have the charge for the actual water, or the, and the actual wastewater. So, that 1% increase in this water, water charge equals 14 cents a month to a minimum bill, and it's less than a 1% rate increase for water. And then, it would be an additional, a little over one cent for every 100 gallons of water after the minimum, and our minimum bill is 1,500 gallons. The sewer minimum, with a 12.3% increase, that would be an increase of $1.35 to a minimum bill. However, the wastewater projects that we did bonding for, they have been completed now, we know what our final amortization schedule's going to be, and so, I know that we can reduce that debt service minimum by $3.81 a month, so it ends up being an overall decrease to the sewer portion of the bill each month of 9.34%, or $2.46 a month. And then, if you combine for somebody that has both water and sewer that are inside the city limits, and that are on the volume method of sewer billing, they would have an overall decrease of $2.32 each month to their monthly bill, which is 5%. And so, other than cat, like, that's, as far as revenues go, that's really the important information that, that everybody needs to know. But if anyone has any questions about revenues, then I can answer those at this time, or I can go on.
Councilman Leitner?
Are we getting a water increase in Kansas City?
Yes. Both increases are due 100% because of the increase that we're getting from our third-party, our other-party providers. So, Kansas City's estimated is going to be 1%. They have not finalized that yet, but estimated right now is 1%. And then, the Little Blue Valley Sewer District will be a 12.3% rate increase.
Why?
That is because they did improvements in their system a couple of years ago, and they, if you were, will remember, they actually came to one of our meetings and, and spoke to the council about that before they issued that debt, and, and they were needed improvements that, and now we're all paying for it.
What was that increase in sewer?
12.3% in sewer. Mm-hmm. But because we're lowering our debt, our debt service minimum, then it ends up for a minimum bill actually decreasing 9.34%.
Okay.
For the sewer portion.
Yeah, I was wondering why, why they was increasing 12, and we was increasing 4. Thank you.
Well, we're increasing the sewer portion rate by $1.35 a month, or 15 and a half, a little over 15 and a half cents for each additional 100 gallons, which is a 12.3% increase. But overall, because we're reducing that debt service charge, they end up with a, a net decrease.
Thank you.
Yes.
Councilman Finn?
So, we have like, we have like a 20-year lease with Kansas City with further water, right?
Yes.
And is there a cap on what they can increase percentage-wise per year?
No.
So, we're at the mercy of, of that?
Yes.
They have to justify what their charges are to us?
They're, what they're doing is, they're doing the same thing that everyone is doing. They're, they're having to make infrastructure upgrades, their infrastructure's very old, they're having to make improvements to their system, and they also are funded through their user rates and fees, and so, it just happens that the, the rates that they're charging are what they need to charge to be able to make the revenue, to make those necessary upgrades.
Right, okay.
Where are we in, in the long-term contract with Kansas City? Do you know?
I do not. 18 more years, maybe?
18, 18 and a half.
Where are we at in the, I'm sorry.
Don, Celia, do you know where we're at in the contract with Kansas City? What year?
I know it was recently renewed, a couple of years back, but I would say it's, I would say we're at least 10 years out, I believe, for the, for next, for new date, but I can confirm that, and get back with you if I'm wrong.
Yeah, I know, I've seen the document, I just, a lot of other information there, so, we, we can get back to you on that, Councilman Tressel.
I just, if it's 10 years out, you know, it's one of those things we talked about, an alternative water system, and 10 years out would be time to be planning if that's what's gonna happen, or not.
And I've been looking, there's been some studies done, and $25 million, $45 million, you know, options to go to Water One, or through the rural water district, so it's a big undertaking. I mean, it would be nice to be able to have our own independence, but it's gonna cost us a lot to get there.
Councilman Leitner?
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Well-
Were you done, Chad?
Yeah, I'm done, yeah. I thought Kansas City had a limit on how much they would increase us per year.
Yeah, I did too.
We can find out and clarify.
That's why I asked that question.
This is-
I thought a couple of years ago, we wanted to increase what we could intake a day.
Thought there was, but maybe there's not.
How much of, of our wastewater goes to Little Blue? We had that discussion in the office.
Yeah, I recall last year from Mr. Tyler, that almost half of our wastewater goes to Little Blue.
So, we pump it all the way to the Missouri River?
Almost to the Missouri River.
I guess it's a good clarity.
Not quite into it.
It intersects, it intersects at the treatment plant.
Great. It makes a pit stop.
Yeah.
A pit stop, wow.
I think it's pretty much everything, everything the other side of the railroad track that goes through there goes to Little Blue.
Little Blue, and then where's the rest of it go?
Out south.
Downstream.
But, yeah. Questions we always ask in class. Councilman Finn, where does our wastewater to the south go? Take it through our plant, it's been treated, now where's it go?
Peculiar.
Okay.
No.
It actually goes to the Grand River, and then ends up-
Truman.
Truman Lake, right. Just thought everybody'd have a good time there. Okay. Yeah. It's treated really well.
I thought that was a rivalry, rivalry question.
I used to ask the kids with that question in class. So, any other questions on, on this component of it, because there's a lot more to go?
So, if you don't have any questions on revenue, then I would like to just briefly touch on the capital outlay. The wastewater fund capital outlay can be found on page 79, and there is $2.8 million that has been set aside for capital expenditures in the fiscal year 2020 budget, and for the wastewater fund. $1.3 million of that is for vehicle pump and meter replacement in future years, kind of like a savings for, that, that is going to be just for that. $350,000 is set aside to, for a start on a future public works operation building. $1,050,000 is for improvements to the sanitary sewer system, including stream bank stabilization, and $300,000- And three hundred ninety-six thousand dollars is for equipment purchases. And then if you would like to, if you don't have any questions on that, then you could turn to page eighty-four and we can go over the capital outlay for the...
Before you turn over, you explained to us that the cash carryover, it confuses a lot of us, if we go from the department estimate like 2019 versus the FY 2020, that you, what do you do with your carryover from 2020?
If, so for example, do you see here under pump equipment replacement, there was three hundred thousand dollars budgeted. None of that is being spent in the current year. The reason none of that is being spent in the current year is because it's a savings account to hold over to be able to pay cash for future pump equipment. And then the bud, the department request was actually a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in this current year. So we added the three hundred thousand dollars that is being carried over from the current budget year, which is in this column, plus the hundred and fifty thousand dollar of new requests equals four hundred and fifty thousand dollars that is, that is going over. So if I would have just put a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in this line item, then that three hundred thousand dollars that we had already saved up for would then be available for the department to spend on something else. And so we carry that over so that it's encumbered or tied up and can only be used for that pump equipment replacement. And then we add the new amount that they want to add. And that's how those vehicle and pump equipment replacement accounts work. They start out and say it's going to cost a million dollars to purchase all-new equipment. And we're going to need to do that in ten years. So I'm going to divide that by ten, and I'm going to save a tenth of that each year going forward. And then we're going to start buying equip, like, take, when we buy new equipment, we'll take buying that out of that line item and then keep replenishing it so that there's always enough money to pay cash for that equipment.
Did you have a question over there? Okay, that helped.
I've got a question. The bottom right figure there under the proposed budget, you're showing what, is it, am I reading that thirty-one fifty-four, or three?
Three...
Three, one fifty-four, four hundred?
Three million...
My book's showing like twenty-eight oh four.
You've moved on to capital outlay.
Yeah, we're on the same page.
Okay.
There's a typo down there, I think.
Oh, I think that, you know what, I think... I don't know why, but this does not, this twenty-eight oh four does not include this three hundred and fifty thousand dollars up here. So I think Madison caught that when she was reviewing it, and she told me to change it. So I changed it, but she didn't update the page, so...
So what's it going to be, let's scratch it out?
It's the three million, one fifty-four, four hundred. The number that's in your book doesn't include this three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So if you add three fifty plus a million fifty plus one-two-one-seven-four-hundred plus five thirty-seven, five hundred thirty-seven thousand, then the total's really thirty-one fifty-four, four hundred. The number that you must be showing doesn't have that three hundred and fifty thousand dollars added into it.
The request.
Yeah, what the request was.
Yes. Yes.
So that means, so you're getting a lot more money?
Well, we're spending... And so, and that's, that's a great point. I almost forgot that one of, Ms. McPherson had two questions in this fund. He had a question on, in the wastewater expense expenditure bu- budget for six sixty, four hundred, twenty fifteen. I'm going to...
What page?
It would be like two pages back, maybe? From where, from page seventy-nine, so like maybe seventy-seven or seventy-eight? And it is four hundred twenty fifteen. It's this one right here. And he asked why, why the budget, the department request is seventy-one hundred, and why did you bump it up to fourteen thousand eight hundred? The reason was is because it, we put in a third of the cardiograph maintenance expense. Cardiograph is a computer software program that is used by Public Works. And that was divided, taken out of the Public Works Department in the general fund, and a third was put into wastewater, a third to water, and a third to the street department because those are the funds that use that. And then he also had a question about, if you look down to electricity, four hundred sixty twenty, he said, why, I had twenty thousand dollars in here, and he said, why do you only have twenty thousand dollars when the prior year you think that you're going to spend two hundred thousand dollars? And it's because somebody forgot to put a zero, and that somebody would be me. So it's fixed.
It's just a zero.
But did it, was it in that line item and said, did it have an impact?
On the bottom line?
It, it, it did, but it did not, it did impact the bottom line, but it did not. And so you can see that over here. I don't know what your number was before, but I'm guessing it was a hundred and eighty thousand dollars more than this one million, three twenty-five, four seventy-eight. So typically, when you change one number in this budget file, it changes a lot of numbers in all different places.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I'd like to buy a zero.
Anybody? Anybody?
They're expensive.
If it only were that simple.
Wow.
There's jail time with that zero.
Councilman Tressel?
This is clarification on seventy-nine.
Yes.
Under the meter equipment replacement, that thirty percent, I assume that's, we're replacing a third of the meters that we're doing here.
It's not, it's saying, it's actually seventy percent goes to the water fund and the other thirty percent goes to the wastewater fund.
So I didn't get it right, so okay.
But, I mean, no, that's lovely, like, I think it's great when you guys ask the questions that you want to know about, because I would have never thought to tell you that. But seventy percent of the equipment we're allocating to the water fund because it's measuring the water, but then we use, we're adding thirty percent because that's how we end up billing by the measurement of water. That's how we bill for the sewer portion of the bill.
Thank you.
Wow, going on.
Okay, so if you go to the capital outlay of water, that is on page eighty-four, there's two point two million dollars that's set aside for capital. One point three million dollars is for the vehicle pump and meter replacement in future years. Three hundred and fifty thousand dollars is a start on the future Public Works operations building. Five hundred and fifty-five thousand is for improvements to the water distribution system, including stream bank stabilization, and seventeen thousand dollars is for equipment purchases. And I just want to check this formula, and it's good, okay.
And we now have the correct total at the bottom, right?
Mm-hmm.
Any more questions or corrections? Councilwoman Lathen?
I have one. Vehicle equipment allocation, four hundred and thirty thousand. What is that for?
That is one of those savings accounts to be able to purchase vehicles in the future with cash instead of having to borrow money for them. So we're do, we're, we have calculated how much all of our, how much it will cost to replace all of our vehicles, and we are saving year by year to put that in there. So that money will be available when it comes time to replace that equipment.
So right now, there's nothing planned for it?
They have been, we're kind of been building that up and funding it to hit our maximum. And then once we get that fully funded, we'll be able to take money out of that and then continue replacing.
Like this service truck for seventeen thousand?
Mm-hmm.
Take that out of there, okay.
Any questions about that? So our golf fund is our last proprietary fund. And honestly, there's, there's no capital outlay. There is debt service on the improvements to the golf course, including the clubhouse that was made in nineteen ninety-eight, and improvements to the driving range in two thousand seven. And the general fund does make a transfer to cover that debt service, and this year's amount is two hundred forty-nine thousand, eight hundred thirty-nine dollars. And while I'm down at this end of the spreadsheet, as we went through this, there were other, there were other typos that were found, and they're highlighted in purple on the, for the grade changes. And I have printed those out, and I have them to hand to you tonight if you would like them. But I did want to point that out. And they're all highlighted in purple. They will not be highlighted in purple when we do the final budget, but they're highlighted in the pictures that I gave you. So we had the receptionist, utility billing clerk, and the finance department. The mechanic and assistant mechanic have the wrong grade. And the battalion shift commander in the fire department. All the secretaries were supposed to bump up, and you can see that they did in other departments. And then just some of them got missed, and that was the case in Fire EMS. There were a couple of changes in the police department with the property police records clerk, the IT assistant, and the part-time reserve officer. And then, again, with the secretary in water services. And then one of the numbers didn't get changed for the golf course manager, so...
One of the positions that you do have in front of you that I do want to talk about, Sheila, if you'd go back to fire, is taking one of the positions. And Chief Larkin and I have talked about it, and so we had the fire marshal with the needs in that department and the need to have an assistant chief. And so that position has been turned into an assistant chief and fire marshal and has been rated accordingly. That individual's been doing that position and doing that job now. And so I just wanted to bring it out because it's a little different than the rest, just in the fact that that title had not been here before where many of these other titles had. So just to bring that to your attention.
What percent is each step?
Two and a half.
Two and a half. Questions?
However, this, almost none of these came with an actual increase, salary increase. The benefit for employees is that it widens the steps. Right now, if you get to step eighteen, you're maxed out, and you're not eligible for a merit increase. You're only eligible for a cost of living increase. And because it had been so long since we had updated and went out and done a survey of the market, so many of our employees were getting maxed out. They were on step eighteen. And there were several that had not seen an increase in many years because they were on step eighteen of their grade. That, I don't see that happening anymore in the future because we will be following the code and going out annually to do the market update.
Questions, comments on this? I want to go back to golf real quick. You got fast on my page eighty-five, real quick. On the actual, in 2018 versus the amended budget at the very bottom?
Yes.
Income over expense, cash basis. Why was that, that it went from one twenty-two to three sixty-four to sixty-one, four fifty? At the very bottom?
Well, that is the, the income over expense is just as revenues come in and we pay expenses out. So you can imagine that probably one of the hardest, most difficult departments to project revenues on is the golf course because it's so dependent on weather. And we've done a great job of being extremely conservative because we never want to come back to the council and ask for more money from the general fund. And that's where the money would have to come if, if we budgeted too high in revenues and then spent too much in expenses. And so you can see, you know, we, we expected to have, from the budget, we expected to have sixty-one thousand dollars of income over expenses. But now we're projecting halfway through the year that we're going to actually have a hundred and eleven thousand dollars. And then next year, again, we're budgeting conservatively and we're with revenues. And so we're budgeting that we're going to have forty-four thousand dollars of revenue over expenses.
Okay, now we discussed about state constitutional amendment, about when we have part-time employees, about minimum wage, how does that affect anything? And what is the constitutional change?
The Missouri minimum wage was increased in November. And so we went ahead and we increased the, our minimum that we paid. As a government entity, we're actually exempt from that. However, we wouldn't be able to keep any employees. So when the state minimum wage increased on January first, we also increased the people that were making below the state minimum wage to that amount.
How many years we got left on our debt at the golf course?
Oh, about eight or so.
How many?
About eight or so.
Eight more years. Okay, interesting. And how much is that approximately?
About two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
A year?
Each year.
And how much of that comes out of the general revenue?
All of it.
Okay, just thought I'd make a point, okay? Where you want to go to next? Questions, anybody else? Okay?
Okay, so if we can go back to and start at the street fund, which is, I kind of want to hit the, which is on page forty-seven, yes? Public hearing time? Wait.
I got it on my flip, my first flip.
Page number.
Oh, there is? So if we can go to page forty-seven. This is the street fund. Funding for this, this is, it's a special revenue fund. The, the funding is, comes from a half-cent local sales tax, state voter, state motor vehicle taxes, and county and road district taxes. All are restricted and can be used only on streets and storm sewers in the city. If you will go to page fifty-one, this is our capital outlay budget for fiscal year 2020. And there is one point eight million dollars that has been set aside for capital. Three hundred seventy-seven thousand, nine hundred fifty-five dollars is for vehicle replacement in future years. Three hundred and fifty thousand dollars is a start on a future Public Works operations building. Five hundred thousand dollars is budgeted for street preservation. And sixteen thousand dollars is for regulatory street signs, and five hundred ninety-nine thousand, fifty dollars is for equipment purchases.
Celia, when are you going to get all the streets fixed? Okay, just kidding, just a little. Go ahead. Turn in April, okay? Questions or comments? Moving on.
Okay, and if you go to page thirty, this is the park fund. And the funding for the park fund is provided by a property tax, user fees, and a two hundred fifty thousand dollar transfer from the park sales tax fund. All of that revenue is restricted to be used on parks and park facilities in the city. The park fund services include the High Blue Wellness Center, outdoor water park, memorial station, and recreation programs. And, and this year's park budget, it includes forty-four thousand, eight hundred and seventy-six dollars of capital outlay for computers, a server, a new security system, and three new upright exercise bikes. Councilman McPherson had some questions, actually several questions, ten of them, about the park fund. He asked if the tree board going back to the parks board would affect their budget. It does... It does not. Um, they already had the tree board included in their line items. They were already taking care of that. That will not affect the budget at all. Um, he, he also asked where the, uh, memorial station rental co- um, rental income shows up. It is actually in the special events. This is the summary page. So you can see their budgeted revenue for, um, for this year is two hundred two thousand thirty-three dollars. And their expenses are also under special events, and that their expenses are a hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars projected. Um, the next question was on, in recreation revenue. Um, you can see that recreation revenue is down from what was the, the amended budget was. And that is due bec- to them, um, eliminating the competitive soccer program. They still have recreational soccer, um, but they, they decided to discontinue the recreational, um, soccer. Expenses also went down because of that. Um, in the main-
They spend on, uh, coaches at that time back then?
Uh, that's, that's one of the questions that we're going to get to. Um, let me see if I can jump to it really quick. So it was four, four hundred thirty-twenty. So you can see in the four hundred thirty-twenty, right here, let me see if I can make this a little bigger for you. They were spending their budget, um, and this was not just coaches, but a big chunk of it was. Two hundred and twenty-five thousand eight hundred and fifty-two dollars was spent on contractual in fiscal year seventeen. A hundred ninety-seven thousand four seventy-nine was, um, spent in fiscal year two thousand and eighteen. They had budgeted for a hundred and fifty-four thousand four hundred and eighteen this year, but they're projecting to only spend sixty-three thousand. And then, um, next year's budget is going to be seventy-three thousand eighty-four. And so that, that difference is, are the coaches for competitive soccer.
That's a great fix by the park board. That's outstanding that they recognize that, and with a new park director, that's some good stuff there. Really pleased, be proud of that, that parks. And I'll probably have another comment when you get to the end, so you don't turn me too fast.
Okay, so I'm going to go to park maintenance. Um, one of the questions was also about contractual in the park maintenance budget. And that, um, you can see that the amount that they are expecting to spend this year is a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, and then next year's budget is only forty-one thousand dollars. And that is because they, um, are going to move mowing in-house. And then if I go to, um, back to recreation, in their supplies line, which is four hundred forty thirty-three. Oh, this is tournaments. You can see tournaments went down, the, that tournaments, those tournament, um, expenses were due to, um, competitive soccer. And so we're also saving money there. And then forty forty soccer, you can see that the, there's also additional savings in this line item from getting rid of that competitive soccer program. Um, in the aquatic center budget, um, there was a question about line number four hundred twenty-eighty, which is equipment rental. And, um, the equipment rental is, is chang- is changing because they are renting, um, equipment to clean the pool when it's shut down annually. And then there is another question about the aquatic center in four hundred thirty-twenty. And that is contractual. And, um, this change had to do with reducing outside services. They had two employees that are, are licensed, um, to take care of the aquatic, aquatics facility operator licenses. And so, um, they were doing a monthly maintenance plan, and they're not going to have to do that. It's only going to be as needed now. And I think I covered all of your questions. Any other questions?
They had a couple of pumps, I think it was, go out this year, one or two. Had a great expense. And I would say, how do you feel about their budget this year, Sheila?
Um, the big change was the competitive soccer program. And, and that was the big change. I feel like their revenues are, are fairly conservative. And I, I believe that they are doing a really good job of staying within budget.
Yeah, I think they are too. And then I want to add in too about with all the new economic development in there. There's a half-cent sales tax for the park. Half-cent sales tax, of course, the Hancock Amendment limits the amount of, we can get from established economic development already. But because of new, that's probably helping them quite a great deal is, uh, to make it and to make better improvements, et cetera, as a result of that increase on their assessment of property on new economic development. How to make a big difference in your budgets. So we're really excited about that, that you can do some of the things that you're going to want to do in the future, all the amenities that you all have planned. But it is, uh, under the current management, they work, work real close with city management, which makes all the difference in the world from years past. This, this is really a good thing. And it's, it's not a vindictive type of a situation. It's, they're working really well together. Real pleased, got a good group. Anybody else? Sir?
I have one thing. On, on page thirty there, enter fund transfer. Where is that coming from?
The park fund. The park sales tax fund.
Park sales tax? Okay.
That's quite a jump there, isn't it?
No, it actually, um, is the same amount as they're, they're taking this year, this current year.
I'm talking about, I guess I'm talking about something different, apples and oranges there. Did you have a question? Okay. Other questions or comments? Other, you down there, former park president, you got anything down there?
Good.
Okay. What do you got next?
Um, in two minutes, our public hearing has to start. Um, I, I could try to get through the hotel motel tax fund in two minutes, and I might be able to. Just to, but if you have questions, maybe we'll have to come back to it. Um, on page forty-five is where that fund starts. Um, this funding is provided by the hotel motel tax that is restricted to be used only on economic development. And this year's hotel motel tax fund budget includes ninety-seven thousand dollars of capital outlay for site diligence and preparation to help attract businesses that will create primary jobs. Um, and actually, there was one question, um, about this fund, and it had to do with four hundred, line number four hundred thirty-five oh five. And it's the public information line. And the question was, um, this current year, the budget was forty-five thousand dollars for that. Um, we only were going to spend ten thousand dollars this year. Uh, that's what we're estimating. And then we, we kept it down to ten thousand five hundred. There was money in that line item, the original budget, um, that was for ICMA TV. And, um, we, there, a decision was made that, that money not to do that, ICMA TV. Instead, there would be a better use of, of those dollars.
Questions? Comments? Thank you. Are you there?
One more minute. Hey, I did pretty good. I got done without two minutes. So I say we just get ready to do the public hearing.
You got a comment?
Yeah, Sheila, can you just provide a little clarification here? Um, how much more do you have to follow, um, after this for budget? So when we conclude the public hearing, we're going back to work session and not into the regular meeting?
Yes. Um, how much more? I have about a page and a half, maybe?
Okay.
And we started with two and a half?
Is that your way of telling me not to ask so many questions?
No, just to let you know that we're not going back to regular session. We're going back to work session.
Okay, hearing that, we're going to adjourn the work session. Now we're going to go to call the public hearing to order. Public hearing to receive input on the proposed annual budget for fiscal year April first, two thousand and nineteen, ending March thirty-first, two thousand and twenty. With that, is anybody going to speak to this this evening? Not any of your department heads? No, it's not the appropriate time. Okay. Anybody want to speak to this? Public hearing on the budget. Mr. Justin, Mary Paws. Wish we had that Jeopardy clock running. Seeing none. We'd like to adjourn the public hearing, and at that time, call regular meeting to order. We'd like to have the pledge led, led to-
Back to work session.
Oh, my goodness gracious.
Page and a half.
That's not on my page. Okay, back to the budget. I don't want to move my computer again. Okay. Here we go.
In all fairness, it did not take me a whole entire hour to get through one page because you guys did talk about BIMA before this.
Oh, my goodness gracious. That's weak sauce. All right.
Okay, um, I, I don't, I actually put a lot of thought in, like, what order I was going to go with funds. Um, I'm going to have you guys going all over your book. That's fine, and I'll tell you which page number. But, um, I'm going to go to the Geo Bond Fund next. Um, the General Obligation Bond Fund. The funding is provided by taxes on real and personal property that repays the debt that was approved by voters for stormwater improvements, road improvements, park improvements, and the two thousand and six fire safety projects, which included a second fire station. And so this is just, um, property tax revenue that is needed to repay the principal and interest on general obligation debt, which is approved by voters. And if you-
Wow, that was quick.
If you as, I mean, the rest should go pretty quick unless you have questions, which I welcome. Okay, so, um, next on page fifty-three is the Capital Improvement Sales Tax Fund. And this, um, the funding for this fund is provided by a half-cent sales tax that expires on December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-eight. And it is restricted to repay, um, debt that paid for improvements to the police station, the court and annex buildings, the Highway Y and Seventy-One interchange, energy efficient, um, impro- improvements made throughout city facilities, and the fire and emergency management vehicles and equipment lease. So that's where this half-cent sales tax goes. And it's restricted, if there was money that, um, was available above and beyond the debt service payments, that money could only be used on capital improvement purchases. If you go to page fifty-five, this is the Park Sales Tax Fund. And the funding, um, is provided by a half-cent, um, sales tax that is restricted to be used on only parks and park facilities in the city. And the Park Sales Tax Fund is making the principal and interest payments on the community center facilities, including the indoor pool, and also provides, um, the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of funding, um, for park operating expenses. And then it's also paying for, um, the city's portion of the Belray Connector Trail. The park, um, board and park director came to the council and asked for you to approve a grant for that trail and, um, and promised that they would have the funds to do the grant match. And that is exactly what they're doing. If you turn to page fifty-two.
Sheila, if you'll hold on just a minute there.
Yes.
Look there at the bottom of that sheet. You'll see that there's a transfer to the Parks Fund of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And that's where you asked where that was coming from. There's where it's coming out of and going to.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, and then on page fifty-two is the Marquis Parkway Regional Detention Fund. Having a hard time finding it. There it is. And the revenues in this fund are collected from fees that are paid by developers within the watershed of the Marquis Parkway Regional Detention Facility. And these fees are restricted for construction and maintenance of the regional detention area. On page fifty-six is the Mayor's Christmas Tree Fund.
Let's spend some time there.
The, the revenues in this fund are donations that the mayor receives from individuals and private companies for the benefit of the Belton Welfare Association.
Don't you think that that's unrealistic to expect us to go up that high this next year?
Uh, you did it this year. You, you hit over. I, I think it's reasonable.
Twenty-seven, I thought you were conservative.
I, I rounded it down by a hundred bucks.
Thanks, the tree is going to grow, so.
If you turn to page fifty-seven, this is the Drug Seizure Fund. The revenues in this fund are a result of property and cash that is seized during the course of investigations after the defendant has been convicted. The funds collected can only be used for law enforcement purposes, and they cannot be used to replace or fund continuing operations. You can see that, um, that there's nothing budgeted, um, no expenses budgeted to be paid for from this, the, in fiscal year two thousand and twenty. We, we have benefited from this fund, um, a, a lot in previous years. And, um, we'll let the cash balance grow up a little bit, and then we'll be able to hopefully fund other, other, um, capital purchases. If you turn to page fifty-eight, this is the DWI Recovery Fund. And the revenues in this fund are from fines and recoupment of costs collected from cases involving DWI and drunk driving-related traffic accidents. And these revenues can only be used for law enforcement expenses.
Chief, on that one, Senate Bill Five and the, the following legislation. Do we have anything coming out of Jefferson City that could affect this?
There was a proposal on court costs that was filed, it was then withdrawn. They're looking to, uh, refile another measure. However, the Supreme Court, uh, is handing down some new rules that will begin in July that will have certain effects on, uh, bond and bail and holding and sentencing, uh, which may have some effect, uh, on state courts that have, uh, not been, uh, charged with the same responsibilities that municipal courts have. This particular DWI recruitment is set out in statute and, and lists what we can and cannot charge for that. It all has to be, uh, based on actual costs, which we calculate. So we, we follow the current state statute on DWI, DWI recruitment. Those funds go into here. However, the, the number of DWIs since the time this was passed has gone down, both from an enforcement, uh, and from actual people that are driving while intoxicated, which is a good thing. But these numbers are based on actuals and what we anticipate coming in.
Do we do any checks anymore?
State of Missouri did away with funding, uh, DWI checkpoints. The funding now has gone towards more targeted enforcement. Uh, and, uh, that, that, they call them wolf packs, uh, which means teams of officers that go out and look for, uh, po- po- potential DWIs instead of, uh, pulling people over randomly and, and, uh, stopping them in the checkpoints.
Questions? Thank you.
There, there is, uh, twenty-four thousand three hundred dollars that is budgeted, um, out of this fund um, next year for police duty pistols. And that, we're using our, our carryover funds. You can see that we were carrying funds over, and we're going to go ahead and deplete those down next year. And then we will, um, again, try to let that balance build up, and then hopefully use that for a capital item in the future. So, um, if you turn to page fifty-nine, this is the Special Training Fund. Uh, the revenues that are budgeted in this fund are for court costs that are collected, um, according to statute. And these funds can only be used for law enforcement officer training costs, um, for post-certified officers. And so we, we use what we can out of this fund. And so, we use what we can out of this fund first, and then, we spend the rest out of the general fund, out of the police department's operating budget. And then, all I have left are the TIF funds. We have eight TIF funds. Belton Town Center is kind of in a weird place in your budget book, page 43. And then, starting on page 60, you have the other seven... Or let me count here. I'm sorry, there are six TIF funds. So, you have the other five. And I would be happy to answer any questions about any of the TIF funds.
Town Center, real quick, have we got their sales tax right? Has the Department of Revenue got their tax rate right?
So, you are talking about the TDD, I believe.
Well, that's part of their tax that they pay there, like at a Home Depot.
Yes. So, the last I heard, the Department of Revenue for that shopping center, they had contacted the vendors and told them... The Department of Revenue notified all of those stores that they were to collect the wrong tax rate. And now, they have notified them all and told them to collect the right tax rate.
Okay. What that cost us? Didn't cost us anything.
It cost one... It cost the people that were shopping 1%. They had accidentally thought that they were not only in the Belton Town Center TDD, but also in the Belton-Cass Regional TDD.
Clarify who "they" thought that.
Missouri Department of Revenue.
It wouldn't have anything to do with Home Depot or anybody. Forced to have none. Exactly. Thank you for clarifying that. That's a good question.
So, is the tax going up or down there?
It's going down. Yeah, that's a good question to comment too. Okay, we're over to the other ones then on page 60, you said?
Yeah, I mean, yes. Starting on page 60 is Belton Marketplace. And then, we have Cedar Tree, Y Highway Marketplace, Y Belton Plaza, and South Town Plaza. And just by statute, once a TIF plan is adopted, 50% of the eats goes into the Special Allocation Fund. And then, it can be 100... And 100% of the pilots. And then, we have TIF contracts where all except for Belton Town Center TIF, a 25% rebate goes back to the taxing jurisdiction. So, we end up netting 75% of the pilots instead of 100% that is allowed by state statute. And then, one of our TIFs, Y Highway Marketplace TIF, we have agreed in our TIF contract to give the other 50% of eats that are not captured on our general... The 1% general sales tax, the half-cent straight sales tax, and the half-cent capital improvement sales tax. Though, the other 50% goes back into that TIF fund to help pay certified costs.
And we've talked about this already when we talked about TIFs with economic development. But when does Marketplace come to fruition?
Marketplace is a guesstimate. A guesstimate that it will be paid off in fiscal year... By the end of fiscal year 2020.
Okay. And then, the Town Center?
The following year.
And how long has the Town Center one been? Before anybody, maybe not Councilman Lathrop? That was way before most of us. What... How many years was that TIF?
I think it was in 2005 or 2006.
I thought it was... I thought it was already 20 years.
No, it cannot be. Well, it can't go longer than 23 years.
Twenty-three, that's what I was thinking. That answered my question. Somebody else got a question? Okay. Good. What do you got next?
That's it.
Thank God. Oh, my goodness. Let's do this again.
Next week shouldn't be too bad because we're going to talk about the construction funds. We don't have very many of them. And you'll get to hear about all the great big projects that we're planning on doing.
Thank you. Like to adjourn?
Work session.
Work session and move on. Now, we're going to take a five-minute break. Let's go to that so I can get organized.
I couldn't make it. I was like, I've been drinking beer today. Slap some ice tea.
Calm.
Got a problem. As intriguing as all those numbers are to me.
Yeah.
We'd like to have, I'm tossing this around, let's have Councilman Trutzle, you looked at me first, to lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please.
You made eye contact, let's do this.
Good eye contact, teacher skills.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, like to start out a little different, we've lost a couple of pioneers in our city this last few weeks. Fred Olinger, you know, a great guy, and I'm gonna probably talk a little bit more about them later. And of course Darrell Cowan, who was on the city council. And Fred was an icon on emergency management, but I'd like to take a moment of silence at this time. Thank you. Okay, roll call, please.
Mayor Davis.
Here.
Councilman Savage. Councilman Lathrop.
Here.
Councilman Van Winkle.
Here.
Councilman Trutzle.
Here.
Councilman McPherson.
Here.
Councilman Finn.
Here.
Councilwoman Davidson.
Here.
Councilwoman Peak.
Here.
Okay, consent agenda. One motion, nondebatable, to approve the recommendations noted, any member of the council may ask for an item be taken from consent agenda for discussion separate action.
Present.
Second. Motion is second, discussion. Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes. Personal appearances, ordinances. A, a motion approving both readings of bill number 2019-06.
An ordinance amending Chapter 13 Motor Vehicles in Traffic, Article 11 Vehicle Equipment, Division 2 Seat Belts of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Belton, Missouri, enacting a primary seatbelt ordinance.
Present.
Second. Motion is second, discussion. Councilwoman Peak, we were talking about this, you said that the CARES group, we worked on that?
I know at one point here recently, the CARES groups talked about seatbelts and trying to get more of the students to, and the people of Belton, to put their seatbelts on.
Patrick, you've looked over this, I think, probably, and this is a trend across the country, or how do you feel on this?
Yes, this is specifically a trend locally right now, Kansas City recently changed theirs. The main thing that you'll notice from the ordinance is seatbelt violations right now are a secondary violation. So if you get pulled over for speeding and you don't have your seatbelt on, you get a ticket. This change makes it so that it can be a primary violation. If you are driving the speed limit with all your headlights and everything on, the police can still pull you over and write you a ticket for not wearing a seatbelt. And again, Kansas City just recently did this, St. Louis, quite a few cities already have this, it's actually already been litigated over there, so that's nice for us. And so yeah, I think the school district also proposed this change as well, so it has support from the community.
The big thing there, again, Councilwoman Peak was about the kids, how many times a year do we see where kids didn't have their seatbelt on and were ejected and lost? So yeah, I would have to say that this is a good thing, any questions or comments on this one?
And the kids do, they do seatbelt checks a couple times a year.
We used to, way time ago, give them imaginary tickets or as they came into the parking lot at school. Of course, back then, they had gun racks, but...
With guns in them.
Just, you know, a moment in time. Any more comments or questions? And that goes into effect on March 1st if we pass this. Okay. Seeing none, do you want to say something on that one? City manager?
Nope, that was it, March 1st.
March 1st, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes.
Move for a second reading?
Second.
Motion and a second for a second reading, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes. B, I'm sorry, A, a motion approving the second reading of bill number 2019-06.
An ordinance amending Chapter 13 Motor Vehicles in Traffic, Article 11 Vehicle Equipment, Division 2 Seat Belts of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Belton, Missouri, enacting a primary seatbelt ordinance.
Present.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Did you get the second? Councilman Van Winkle.
Could somebody just go over the structure, the fine structure and that? Is this being changed, just so the public knows what we're looking at?
Yeah, if you see, I do believe it is B on the...
On the ordinance, it changes the fine from a $10 maximum to a $10 to $50, so there is discretion there. It is, $10 is your floor, $50 is your ceiling. Kansas City, who again, just recently changed theirs, theirs is $50 across the board. I think the comments amongst staff was that it'd probably be better if we gave some discretion to either the municipal court judge or officers in writing the tickets to see what the amount should be.
You're not confessing anything, are you?
No, I always wear mine.
Okay, yeah. After you get a ticket, you, well, too, probably, they'll think about it again, but when you see somebody hurt or maimed because they had, it changes your life, it's a big deal. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none.
Councilwoman Davidson.
Aye.
Councilman Finn.
Aye.
Councilwoman Peak.
Aye.
Councilman Lathrop.
Aye.
Councilman Trutzle.
Aye.
Councilman McPherson.
Aye.
Councilman Van Winkle.
Aye.
Mayor Davis.
Aye, and that motion passes. Okay. B, a motion approving both readings of bill number 2019-07.
An ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute the final Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission cost share agreement with the City of Belton, Missouri, in substantially similar form to the draft agreement included as Exhibit A for the Belton I-49 Outer Road, 155th Street to 163rd Street project.
Present.
Second.
Motion is second, any discussion? How come the city manager gets to do this and not the mayor?
You can change it to mayor if you like, it's just...
No, I just thought I'd ask.
I'm typically in the office to be able to help facilitate the paperwork.
Oh, paperwork, you're fine.
Carry on.
Any discussion pertinent? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes.
Move for a second reading?
Second.
Motion and a second for a second reading, discussion. Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes. B, a motion approving the second reading of bill number 2019-07.
An ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute the final Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission cost share agreement with the City of Belton, Missouri, in substantially similar form to the draft agreement included as Exhibit A for the Belton I-49 Outer Road, 155th Street to 163rd Street project.
Present.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none.
Councilman McPherson.
Aye.
Councilman Lathrop.
Aye.
Councilman Finn.
Aye.
Councilwoman Peak.
Aye.
Mayor Davis.
Aye.
Councilman Trutzle.
Aye.
Councilman Van Winkle.
Aye.
Councilwoman Davidson.
Aye.
Motion passes. Resolutions? We have no resolutions. Liaison, city council liaison reports, Park. Councilwoman Davidson.
So quite a few events coming up. The first one, don't let the kids miss out on our next Kids Night Out, it's a Super Bowl party on Saturday, February 16th, that's the Saturday, yeah, the Saturday, runs from 5:30 to 10:00 p.m. and promises to be another fun-filled night of Super Bowl themed games, swimming, hot dogs, and nachos, crafts, and more. Kids Night Out is for kids five to 12 years old, and don't miss your chance to save $5 if you register by this Friday, the 15th. The cost is 20 for the first family member and 15 for each additional family member. Cost is 25 at the door for the first family member and 20 for each additional. Hope to see you there, stop by High Blue to register. And then they've also extended the deadlines on the Best Reg Soccer League deadline extended through this Sunday, February 17th, for all divisions except Little Kickers. There's also a Daddy Daughter Dance coming up, so it says Dad Save the Date and Spoil Your Star when we roll out the red carpet for our Daddy Daughter Dance Hollywood Night on Saturday, February 23rd from 7 to 9 at Memorial Station. Our annual Daddy Daughter Dance is for girls four to 13 years old. Early bird fee is $40 per couple and $5 for each additional daughter if signed up by February 18th. After that, the fee is $50 per couple. You will be treated to a live DJ, professional photographer, dancing, food, fun contest, and a flower for each girl and lots of glamorous memories. Register at the Wellness Center or by calling 348-7400, hope to see you there. Let your kids unleash their artistic side on March 8th at our first ever paint class just for kids ages seven to 14. They will be painting an adorable owl, paint, brushes, easels, canvas, and snacks, and instructions provided. We'll leave the fun to the kids, and parents, you're welcome to join in the fun too. Parents can share a canvas with their child, but if you want your own canvas, they will need to register. Cost is $20, space is limited, so register early to ensure a spot. And signups are underway for our American Red Cross lifeguarding course at High Blue. Participants must be at least 15 years old and pass the swim test before the first class. Cost is $175 for members and $200 for non-members. Course dates can be found on their Facebook page, but are February 22nd, 23rd, and 24th. Almost done. Come check out these free spring gardening classes that promise to enhance your gardening knowledge, whatever your experience or interest. The free one-hour classes will be held each Tuesday at 6:30 p.m. at Memorial Station from March 5th to April 9th. The classes will be presented by the Cass County Master Gardeners. Classes are free, but participants are asked to register by contacting the Cass County Extension Office at 816-380-8460. Last one, looking for a fun working environment, come join our team. The Park Department is now hiring for several part-time positions, including lifeguards, summer camp director, summer camp assistant directors, recreation facilities supervisors, and recreation assistants. And we will be posting more summer job opportunities soon, just follow the link below, which is their Facebook page, for job descriptions and applications, or as always, applications can be picked up at High Blue, so lots going on.
Thank you, that's Daddy Daughter Dance, that's quite a mouthful.
Daddy Daughter Dance Hollywood Night.
I don't remember that. I couldn't do that, that's a tongue twister, I gotta remember that one. Say it 10 times.
I think she did.
Thank you very much, do we have anything over there? Anybody else? Liaison reports? Okay. Mayor's communication, I said I was gonna come back to our departed council members. Fred Olinger was also with BEMA, but he also was a councilman from like 83 to my years here, 83 to 93. A council member, very active in our city all these years, and be sorely missed. Darrell Cowan, Alderman, they weren't councilmen back then, they were councilmen from 1986, he was, to 2001. And Darrell, a great man, and had a big part in our city, and they're both icons and will be both sorely missed. And we really appreciated them. Neighborhood watch meetings are starting up again, of course, the weather's played havoc with some of them, had one last night. And it was kinda neat to see that they, how do they say it, I'm technologically challenged, were they streamlined it or something while we're...
Facebook Live.
Why did you have to say that so quick, you have to always correct me on my technology, that quick, just like that snap. Streamlined, it was kinda neat, really, the way they do that. And so, and the people were firing in their questions as the meeting went on. That, I said fire in and you're all nodding your head, I've never done that before, so, yeah, it was pretty neat, yeah. It was good stuff, though.
Works off the internet.
So it's that time of the season, there's people that are concerned, they're doing a very good job, and we'll be seeing a lot more out of them, a lot of action out of our community neighbor watch. City managers report.
Thank you, Mayor, as a reminder to you and the rest of the council and as well as our citizens, our February and March meetings, all of our meetings now are on the 2nd and the 4th Tuesdays of the month, and they commence at 6 o'clock for work sessions with the regular session immediately following. Our next meeting is February 26th, followed in March by March 12th and March 26th as well. I do have a handful of items to bring to your attention this evening, and one of the items is, is as you'll know, and you've been seeing a lot of the trees and earthwork happening over at the Southview Commerce Center. There has been, they have received their permit, they will be doing underground small minor blasting to prepare that area for infrastructure, and that will begin on February 25th. They have taken proactive approach to notifying the community, talking with the homeowners that are in that area that would be impacted by that, and providing them information. That again, begins on February 25th. Another item that you probably have in front of you this evening is a notice from the Missouri Municipal League that the elected officials training is on June 6th and 7th, we will be providing you with additional reminders of that as we get closer. But if you have an interest in attending that, you can let myself or Andrea Cunningham, the city clerk, know about that. The next item that I have for you is about bulky pickup dates that impact the city. For Monday pickup, that is on April 5th, 2019, and for Tuesday pickups, it's on April 19th of 2019.
Are there any qualifications for that bulky pickup stuff?
There is criteria, and it's been provided, it's on our website, it's also, it's been provided to the individuals. One of the things that I would like to remind that leads into my next topic is it does not include yard waste, does not include tree limbs or brush or anything like that. That, in fact, on the tree limbs, we are going to extend for two additional Saturdays contingent upon weather. This Saturday is looking iffy, this Saturday again, looks like more snow. So if that's the case, those individuals that works the brush limb drop-off are those individuals that clear the snow from our streets. So if we have snow, and we will be notifying everybody on our website, but if we have snow, we will be deferring that, the next pickup. And then want to remind everyone that in March commences the yard waste pickup for our disposal company from Jim's Disposal, and there is criteria for that, so if you're unable to bring your limb drop-off to the site at Markey Park, there's another possibility of being able to group it in bundles, not more than four foot in length, I believe. And I can't remember the, how big or round it can be, the diameter, do you remember? But we can, we can update that information, but I want to let everyone know that that will start in March. So if you're, if you have a few items, you're unable to take it to the drop-off, you're able to put it at your curb in March. And then the last item that I have for you is you also have at your location the flyer, I'm gonna borrow the one I sent from Mr. Savage, that we talked about for Proposition R and Proposition S, those are the streets and storms who are projects, and it outlines some educational information that we want to be able to provide to our community, and it outlines some of the information that the council asks be included. This will be placed on our website beginning tomorrow. If you have any questions or comments about it, please do let me know or Sheila know, and we would be happy to try to get that information included on there. But it's basically a, an education piece to talk about what each of the propositions means. It also talks about STANTEC, and I know that the mayor's going to be talking about STANTEC in an upcoming mayor's message comment in the paper about what's, if you see STANTEC trucks in town, what that means and what it's doing for our community, to just start educating the communities to, to address the question that the mayor had for Celia earlier about what are we doing with streets and the efforts that we're going to be making and the bond issuance that we hope citizens will consider in April, will address some of those concerns. And Mayor, that concludes my comments for this evening.
Wow. I was ready for another five minutes. I'm gonna go down and thank you. So with that, any other business? Anybody? Got none?
Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Just one thing, and it goes kind of along what the city manager was just talking about, but there have been a number of people posting recently about 58 Highway and especially the potholes on 58. I thought it might be good if we just gave an update as to what, is that still in the works, when? And things like that, as far as when that's scheduled for repairs.
You're gonna refer that to Celia?
Yeah. So just to preface it with people, there's a lot of people that still think it belongs to the city, so we get calls, you know, every day about fix your potholes on 58, so we always inform them that it is MoDOT's responsibility. Last year, at the end of the year, they bid the project, and they have a whole year to do the work. So at first, we heard, oh, they're gonna get out there and do some in the fall, and now, you know, we haven't had the pre-construction meeting yet, so they could start in the spring or they could start in the summer and hit it hard. So they have to be done by the end of next year, but they haven't really determined when they're going to start yet. But it will be done.
And in the meantime, that's for the complete work and the overlay, but in the meantime, for the potholes, we are calling MoDOT and notifying them, and so as soon as the weather breaks, they will come out and patch those.
Right.
Thanks.
I'm not saying those holes are deep, but I thought I saw Jimmy Hoffa's hands picking up, if one of them's that deep.
Yeah, and this weather has not, you know, this has really contributed to our pothole problem, and everybody has it, so we're trying, on any days that we can, we're trying to get out and fill our potholes as well.
Yeah, but it's been kinda ugly to...
It has.
And then they're full of water anyway.
Right.
Now that everything's thawed for a day.
Right.
And then we'll be backfilled again.
Right, so we're just hoping to kinda...
And everybody's still gotta be safe, 'cause I know there's still a lot of ice in a lot of places.
It'll be full of snow by the weekend.
It's insane.
Just wait, it'll change.
Anybody else? Did that get it done, councilman, all right? Okay, entertain a motion enters executive session, discuss matters pertaining to leasing, purchase, or sale of real estate according to Missouri State Statute 610-0212, and the record be closed and the meeting adjourned from there.
Present.
Second.
Motion is second, any discussion? Seeing none.
Councilman Finn.
Aye.
Councilman Lathrop.
Aye.
Councilman Van Winkle.
Aye.
Councilman McPherson.
Aye.
Mayor Davis.
Aye.
Councilman Trutzle.
Aye.
Councilwoman Peak.
Aye.
Councilwoman Davidson.
Aye.
We are adjourned, thank you.